Hello, hello, hello. Are we up? We're up. Good evening, welcome to the regular city council meeting, T K South Carolina. Today is Monday, December 16th, 2019. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Thank you, maybe senior. Before we start, I just want to recognize one of the founders of T K Buzz Stebbins passed away last week. He was 94 years old. He was one of the original people in T K, correct? He lived here, I think he moved here before 1982, before we were a city. So, and he was also a veteran, West Point graduate. And we're going to miss him. He's a good guy. Okay, let's go with item number one, if I get my glasses on. Item number one is a joint public hearing with the planning commission. Chris Leonard, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 1A is an amendment to the 2015 to 2025 comprehensive plan, and Susan Britt and Kara Drain will lead us through the first part of that. Then we'll open that for any public comments for anyone who signed up. And then council and commission comments to Kara and Susan.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Kara Drain. I'm a senior planner with Catawba Regional Council of Governments, and it's been our pleasure to work with you in the update of your comprehensive plan. Tonight, we're going to go through a brief presentation of the contents of the plan.
Is your microphone on?
Can you hear me? I'm sorry, I must not have been speaking directly.
I can hear you, I was just worried about them.
So, the first item I want to cover is just the importance of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is the legal foundation for zoning and land development regulations, and it also protects health, safety, and the general welfare. But it is also very important because it reflects your local values, and you'll see that as we go through some of the overview about the comprehensive plan. So, the format for your comprehensive plan covers, is similar to your current plan that you have. It has three sections, and it has appendices. And the first section is your vision and core values. The second section covers the 10 elements of the plan, and it specifically covers goals and objectives for each element. The third section is the methodology, and also includes public engagement. And the appendices covers the existing conditions in your plan. And when we talk about the community vision and core values, you see the vision statement. And the vision statement reflects the six core values that you have, which include safety, education, family-friendly, entertainment, recreation, regional context, and special place. And so, as you look, as you, as we talk about the different elements in the comprehensive plan, you'll see that those core values are reflected in all 10 elements. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Susan, and she's going to cover the first four elements in the plan.
Thank you. As Kara mentioned, there are 10 elements in this plan, nine of which are mandatory elements in the Enabling Act, and the 10th element was a local choice element. The population element, a lot of the goals have not changed so much as from the original plan. So, the goals are supporting neighborhoods, managing growth, promoting educational excellence, and then creating social and cultural environments. I wanted to spend a little more time on the land use element, which the goals are promoting innovative development, requiring adequate public facilities and systems, and then collaborating with regional jurisdictions. This is your vision map. This is the vision of how we'd like our city to be, the difference on our vision in land use. On this land use map, you'll see there are some circles. Those circles were identified as municipal infill areas in York County's comprehensive plan. So, what that shows is areas where we may have influence outside our municipal boundaries. Also, a big difference in our update for the land use plan was the development of these mixed-use districts. We have three distinct districts, the mixed-use regional center, a mixed-use city center, and mixed-use neighborhood center. The transportation element, the goals were developing mobility programs. These could include bus routes, and also enhance transportation choices and connectivity. That's looking at new ideas for connectivity between both vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle, and reducing commuting times and cost. This is our transportation map. On this map, you can see identified corridors. You can see proposed new connections that might assist with some of that connectivity. Also, potential bus routes or things of that nature for multimodal travel. The economic development element would be increasing local economic development opportunities and promoting the benefits of our regional economy. You have here the economic development map, which again stresses those mixed-use centers. As you can see there, as opportunities for local economic development. And now, I'm going to turn it back to Kara.
Thank you, Susan. So, the next element is the housing element, and the goals under housing include promotes housing choices and maintains and enhances neighborhoods. You see the T K neighborhood map here. This map reflects the strength that you have in this community of your neighborhoods. And so, the map shows the neighborhoods by name and by geographical boundary. For natural resources, your goals include enhancing natural amenities, conserving green infrastructure, and improving water quality. For cultural resources, they include protecting and also developing new cultural resources for your community. And then the last element I'm going to cover before I turn it back to Susan includes your community facilities element. And you remember, last year, the city undertook a city services assessment, and so, a lot of the information that came out of that project was rolled into this element. But the goals include expanding access to community facilities and also enhancing public investment. And here, you see the community facilities map, and so, all the community facilities in T K are reflected here. And with that, I'll turn it back to Susan.
This is our new element, health and active living. We had a very active focus group that worked on these goals and these initiatives. We were starting from scratch with this because no assessment has ever been done of our community. So, we had to do an assessment too, to begin in the existing conditions. The goals of the health and active living element were improve health, promote active living, educate the public on health and active living components, ensure a health-for-all inclusive policy in the built, for the built environment, supporting access to local foods, maximizing health equity, and enhancing public health. One of the exercises that we did was where people wanted to walk, where they saw potential obstacles, where they wanted to ride bikes, where they wanted to promote that active lifestyle. So, out of that became this, the proposed bike and pedestrian infrastructure map. This shows potential new locations for sidewalks, bike lanes, bike trails. It also identifies obstacles that can, where there can be perhaps infrastructure improvements All this ends with the priority investment element. And the goals for that were coordinating the capital improvement program with the comprehensive plan, coordinating the infrastructure and public facilities for the targeted growth and redevelopment areas, partners on regional infrastructure, and then collaborating for redevelopment and infill sites. So, all of this, I think, works toward being included in the capital improvement program. A little bit about public participation. We've had involvement from city council and planning commission, representatives from each of those, on the steering committee, as well as two citizens. And then, we've had four active focal groups. Each of those focal groups had responsibility for one or more elements, and those groups met two or three times during the year and developed the goals and action strategies for each of those elements. And that ends our presentation.
Thank you, Susan. We'll open up for public comment on the adoption and on the update to the comprehensive plan. Did anyone sign up specifically? But if anyone obviously has any public comments? Okay. All right, there being no public comment then. Mr. Mayor, members of council, do you have any questions or comments? All right, planning commission, any comments? The only thing I would say is I'd like to recognize the work Susan and Kara did over the whole year. They've really put in a lot of work on this whole. Thank you very much. With that, we'll close the public hearing for the update to the comprehensive plan. And we will have a second public hearing to discuss the rezoning of tax map 5840901005, located at 28002 Marina Drive from R15 in the Marina Overlay District to B1 in Marina Overlay District, both in the city of T K. And Susan, if you'll give us an introduction to that, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The applicant's the current owner of the Marina, is also the owner of this property and adjacent property. The, I will refer back to our comprehensive plan update, which does call for the Marina area to become a neighborhood mixed-use area. The, Mr. Denton, who is the applicant, currently lives at 28001 Marina Drive, which has the base zoning of R15, which is a residential use. Ultimately, this property would become part of the neighborhood mixed-use district, would be included in a redevelopment plan for the Marina. He also owns 28002, which also has a base zoning of R15, and this property would also be included in any future redevelopment. But currently, the applicant plans to use this property as the administrative offices for the Marina. In order to do so, the base residential zoning has to be changed to B1, to permit the commercial use until such time as council approves the future land use plan in the comprehensive plan, and then establishes a neighborhood mixed-use zoning district for this area. Staff believes that the annexation and rezoning is appropriate because, one, it is compatible with and serves to implement the recommendations of the 2025 comprehensive plan update, and the sites are in an area already constrained as to the allowable commercial uses by the neighborhood, by the Marina Overlay District standards. Staff recommendation is for approval based on the information provided in the staff report.
Thank you, Susan. Any public comment? I know at least one person signed up to make a public comment, if you want to come up.
I do have one public comment, Mr. Rashid.
Right. Yeah, if you come up, state your name and address.
My name is Michael Rashid, and I'm the homeowner of 28003 Marina Drive, right next to the property in question. I bought this property in 2001, in the spring of 2001, so I've made this my home for approximately 19 years. To say that I'm concerned that this property is going to be rezoned to commercial use is an understatement. I'm terrified of having this property be rezoned prior to the Marina Overlay District being approved. The plan hasn't been approved by council. Susan Britt said, "The buy rights and the development standards have not even been developed." She said that two weeks ago at the last meeting. Establishing a corporate office on that property is going to be an anomaly in T K. Not one street, not one neighborhood, has a commercial business office right in the middle of the street. It's going to change the feel of the neighborhood. It's going to take the hominess out of the neighborhood, and I fear the value of my home is plummeting. What person is going to knowingly buy my house for the price that it could bring? And it's been the only great investment I've ever made, knowing that there is a corporate office right next door to it. If they have that kind of money, they're going to go right down the lake, they're going to follow and find another house. Nobody wants to do that, especially if we're not all on this, we're not zoned the same. This is zoned differently. Now, Susan Britt agreed with Susan Massey when she told the board that the driving point of the Marina Overlay District plan was to protect the residents who make this neighborhood their homes. Yet, Susan told y'all, Susan Britt told y'all, that they want to approve the request to assist the city in meeting the goals of a plan. A plan that is not in place, has not been approved, and it has not yet been fully developed. How does this one proposed corporate office enhance the value of the residents of Marina Drive and of T K? Appears that approving this plan is doing exactly opposite of what the goal was, and not ju, that's to, not just to promote growth, business growth, it's to protect the residents as well. Now, y'all asked some good questions two weeks ago. One was asked, if and when the 2025 plan is enacted, will this 28002 be automatically rezoned to mixed use? Susan said, "It could, could be." Could? Six months to a year after the plan is enacted? Why is it going to take six months to a year to rezone that commercial property when my property is going to be automatically rezoned on day one? I don't understand that. No parking. I think there was some misconception two weeks ago that we had shared parking. Are y'all aware that this is not shared parking? Two, there are two driveways. So, what happened? When Buster Earnhardt, the previous owner, built his driveway, he built it as a single man, one truck fit there perfectly. When he got married, they had two cars. Two cars were tight fit, and when their daughter was old enough to drive, they had three, next to impossible. They frequently encroached onto my property. The same thing happened when Leroy rented the house to his former manager. They had three cars, and again, they came over to my side. That's fine. That's what neighbors do. You don't mind. You say, "Of course, you can park there." But I'm not dealing with neighbors now. I'm dealing with a corporation that has to have three parking spaces because they have three employees that would be driving there. And the question, I don't know, and perhaps you know this, will there be handicap, will handicap access, parking access have to be provided? Do y'all know that? For this property?
Susan, can you answer that? What the, what the parking standards would be?
Will a handicap parking spot be there? Will it be required to have a handicap parking spot?
If it's a public space, yes.
Okay, will that be a public space? I don't know how you're going to fit. If you have to have a handicap parking spot, big enough for them to get a wheelchair out of, there's going to be no room at all for additional parking because you can't block in a handicapped car. And there's no way to do two cars there, have access without blocking them in. So, it's something that you need to consider. I'm not sure how they would, how that's even going to happen. And we're talking about vegetation. I've been reading about vegetation. Do y'all know exactly when and if this property is going to have to put up the vegetational barrier? Does anybody know that?
Susan, have you discussed that with the personal owner? Or if there's even a requirement for that?
I'll refer you to the Marina Overlay. And just for correction, the Marina Overlay is different from the neighborhood mixed-use district. The Marina Overlay exists. It has detailed standards in it. It does require a buffer between intensive commercial use and residential. This is a, an administrative office, not a corporate office, an administrative office. And the, there is handicap parking available farthest across the street at the Marina itself. So, that's, that's already available.
So, there would be a barrier required?
There's not a barrier. There's landscaping, which is 10-foot, which already exists.
I don't believe so, because I don't believe there's 10 feet between the property, between the building and the property line. You might want to check that, because I don't believe there's 10 feet there. I want to know about signage. Have we decided what type, what kind of materials they can have, how many signs, how big they can be, if they can be lighted, or if they can be plastic? Do y'all have an answer for that? Have we determined what kind of signage they can have? Okay. And I'd also like to know who's going to oversee. There are some restrictions that are going to go with this when you rezone it. Who's going to oversee that they're following those restrictions? How often? Do you know how often they're going to be checked on? I think because we have a lack of a completed master plan, and because of the fact that the corporate offices are in no way going to increase the quality of life for the majority of the residents of T K, and especially because council has not approved this mixed-use plan, I think rezoning is entirely premature. That's all I wanted to say about this. I feel like I'm in a John Grisham movie, because this afternoon, at 5:00, when I walked out to pick up my friend, there was a package waiting at my door. This is as scary as I'll get out. Did anybody else get a package that looks like this? Okay. I'm going to have to tell you what it says. Dear Michael, I'm writing to bring your attention to a serious, to serious environmental crimes and other, I don't even understand that word, by your neighbor at 28001 Marina Drive, Mr. R. Leroy Denton.
Sir, you have a three-minute limit, and I think we've passed that point.
Wow. Does anybody want this document? Because I don't know what to do with it, and it absolutely terrifies me.
It's already been sent to the FBI, Michael. We already know that. It's been sent to all the law enforcement, the Tennessee EPA. It's been sent to a lot of places. You guys will get copies because apparently it's gone to a lot of places. And it's got a distribution list in there where it went to, including several newspapers. So, before you make a decision, you may want to look at it.
Mr. Chairman, there's discussion going on outside of a public meeting right now.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Make a part of a word and keep this moving along.
Sure. Thank you, thank you.
I'm finished.
So, yeah, we appreciate your input. Thank you very much for your comments. So, anyone else from the public who has any comments? Does anybody else from the public have any comments? Mr. Mayor, members of council, any comments or questions?
The box represents 02, the address number 02. So, above that would be 01.
Correct.
And this gentleman lives below that yellow box, right?
Yes.
Got it. And that's across from, I know where this is. Yeah. Okay. Just a point of clarification. Anybody have any questions? No more questions, Chris.
All right. Planning commission members, any questions or comments?
There was discussion two weeks ago about potentially, you were discussing inclusion of the adjacent lot in the rezoning. Was that discussed at all, or?
To my understanding, the request was made for the personal owner to also apply for 28001 to be zoned commercial. He declined to do that. Susan, correct? I'm sorry. The personal owner was requested. Was requested to also request a rezoning for 28001, and he declined to do that? Is that correct?
That's correct. It's pretty true of that.
Right. Any other comments, planning commission? All right, then we will, we're good. We will close the public hearing, and the planning commission will adjourn across the way for a special meeting to discuss.
All right, thank you, Chris. We'll give you a moment, and we'll go on to item two. All right, item two is a special presentation, recognition of public safety employees.
Good evening. I've asked a few firefighters and police officers to join me in this. On November the 1st, 2019, T K Fire and EMS were dispatched to Cameron Creek, a neighborhood up towards 160, for an unconscious, unresponsive, and not breathing one-year-old. Detective Spencer, who was passing the neighborhood, heard the dispatch and responded as well. Officer Spencer was the first to arrive while the family was attempting to resuscitate the child. He realized that this unresponsiveness may have been caused by an obstructed airway. He cleared the airway as Captain Justin Daley, Lieutenant Will Blackwelder, and firefighter David Mims walked in. Crews continued to render care, and the child started breathing on his own. Care and monitoring the patient continued until EMS arrived and transported the child to hospital. I'll tell you that the child's alive and well today, and I wanted to recognize these guys for a job well done. I asked Chief Parker to join me in this. I'm going to spin around so you guys can see as well. The, what we've done is we've just created a citation for these guys. This is for Detective Justin Spencer. Chief Parker, would you come over and present?
Congratulations. Great job. Very proud of all of you guys. That's amazing work.
Lieutenant Blackwelder? Thank you. And firefighter Mims? Appreciate you.
Wait too much. Can I just get a, get you a seat up here or something?
I know, my goodness. Every time I put recognizing's on, I'm like, "Thank you so much."
You got a scooch in?
I can't.
How about that? Those of you who show up here on occasion or follow at home, Spencer is up here, seems like every other month. It's just something. So, we're just going to get you a permanent chair up here, and we'll just make a copy of everything, just hand it to them every month. It seems like you're always doing something. So, we're really proud to have you, very fortunate to have you, so appreciate it, everybody, yeah, every one of you. All right, let's go to, item three is public comments. The others that signed up, Mr. Conroy, and then Mr. Becker.
Good evening. My full name is Carl Collins Mark Conroy II, in case you want to know what the KC is. Some people know me as KC, and some people know me as Mark.
Very well. You have three minutes.
I will take much less than that. I'm here this evening from Windsong Bay Village to speak up for the safety of our park. When Windsong, Windsong Bay Park was adopted by the Windsong Bay Village residents, the city leaders included an enclosed fence to promote a safe environment for our children in which to play. Recently, the side of the fence adjacent to Windsong Bay Lane Road was, Windsong Bay Lane, was removed by the city. We are requesting that the city prioritize the replacement of the safety barrier as soon as possible to restore safety and mitigate risk. Cars often speed past the park. TK Police Department has set up the speed tracker at least three times this fall, and traveling east, there are blind spots created by some of the trees. I wanted to make sure the city council was aware of this, and thank you for your continued leadership and to do the right thing. Thank you, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. By the way, have you sent any emails referencing this? By the way, have you sent any emails references before? Have you notified anybody on this already?
Yes.
Okay. Got you. We will look into it. I haven't heard about it. You know about it? Okay. Oh, he's already gone. Well.
Why was the fence removed?
My guess is because it's an older split rail fence. Probably had broken post. It's probably removed to be replaced. I know we've been a little shorthanded on our park maintenance here over the last couple of weeks. We lost an employee. So let me check with Joey in the morning. I'm sure he's got it on the list, but I'll figure out what's going on.
That's a very simple fix. Obviously, I don't hear about everything, but usually I get an email about something like that. We can solve it within days. But if you want to come over and speak here, that's great, too. We can save an email. All right, next is, on the other sheet was, who else wanted to speak? Anybody else want to speak? Come on up, sir. You're Mr. Becker?
I am.
Okay. State your full name and you have three minutes.
All right, Michael Becker. Live at three sixty four Calming Way. And this marks the third time of a period before city council on this matter, which is Trinity Point and the continued erosion. I was here in January, I was here in June. I'm now here tonight. So one year ago, this month, they started clearing the Trinity Point Townhouse development and beginning with the very first rain. After that, sediment started flowing into the creek, through the culvert, all the way down into the lake. And while additional and I'm going a little fast, so just.
No, we were very aware of it. You take your time.
So while additional erosion control measures have been implemented, the fact remains that sediment's still flowing into the lake from the Trinity Point despite multiple attempts at remediation. And the most recently, sediment was, happened this last Friday with those rains.
Yep.
So in July, at the suggestion of DHEC, I pushed sections of PCV pipe into the lake bed and marked it where the lake bottom was. By October, the PCV that was the furthest out into the lake, okay? The furthest from the mouth of the creek is completely covered in sediment and is no longer visible. While the PCV that's closest to the mouth of the stream is close to being completely covered with last Friday's rains. So in addition, the location where the creek empties into the lake was originally on the very left edge or right edge of my property. As the sediment's filled in, it is now dead center in my property, which is thirty or more feet that has moved toward Councilman Machunas's property. So this information been provided to city staff and most recently in October. And I keep hearing some of the same things over and over. While there appears to be a built, and this is from an email I received, okay? While there appears to be buildup of sediment in the lake in the areas you referenced, there's no physical proof at this point that directly pointed to the graders working in Trinity Point. It very likely could be coming from a former sediment deposit further up the cove near the Beach Club, which if I'm not mistaken, is on the other side of the cove from me. And it could also be creek bottom and natural sedimentation due to the heavy sustained rains. Basically, there's no definitive proof that any sedimentation came from the Trinity Point site.
And who's?
Mr. Becker, who is that from?
This is from Mr. Funderbark. And I've been told on different occasions, but you know, essentially the same thing, okay? So let's see. In addition. All right. I'll skip some of this stuff, so. So I've been told multiple times by city staff that the runoff cannot be determined where it's coming from. Now, the city holds the MS four and that makes them responsible for determining, you know, controlling runoff, which I would think includes determining where is it coming from? Once they become aware of it. Doesn't the city have an obligation to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I've walked the creek multiple times, okay? During heavy rains from the mouth of the creek where it empties into the lake, all the way up to the Trinity Point site. All right? Now, there's water coming into that creek from other places in that section, okay? And I can tell you all that water is running clear, okay? It's only the water that's in the creek and it's brown. And it goes all the way brown up to the culvert that runs under Stonecrest and over to the other side of the Trinity Point development. So I'm really perplexed why it can't be determined where the sediment's coming from. It seems plain as, plain as day to me. So we've owned this property since two thousand fourteen. And prior to clearing for developments, I didn't never, we never observed any visible indication of sediment when it rained going into the lake, okay? It wasn't until development started that the water turned brown and you know, get a streak that goes, you know, yards. What do you, hundred yards? At least into the lake. So it's my understanding that's the city's current plan to have the sediment pumped from the cove. This doesn't address removal of the sediment from the creek itself. And I have an engineer's report from an engineer that the, that the city contracted with. And in that report, it states based on the sediment that is in the creek needs to be removed so that it is not washed into the cove. Okay? So if all we do is take it out of the cove without removing it from the creek, it's going to find its way back and, you know, we'll be having this discussion again, unfortunately. I don't think anybody wants that.
Would you tell me again, whose report is that?
This is a report of Joel E. Woodson Associates. Mr. Goble had that report. And I believe there's been some other engineering reports since this. This was the first one I'm aware of. This was actually twenty eighteen. I think there's been some which I don't have privy to since then. So after two aborted attempts to pump, attempts to pump the cove, sediment from the cove, one in September and one earlier this month, it was determined that the lake level needs to be between ninety seven point two and ninety six point eight for the pumping to work. So based on years, you can go online, based on years of the lake level history, lakes usually not at that level, that, that low, except from mid-September through October of every year, of most years. And then again, from December until, you know, toward the end of December or early January. So I'm concerned that the window complete, the work's quickly closing. So in conclusion, I've got three requests. Number one is, times are the essence if the solution's to pump the sediment. Otherwise, the city and the developer, they need to come up with Plan B. As second, as noted in the engineer's report to the city, the remediation plan needs to include the removal of the sediment from the creek itself. Otherwise, it's going to migrate into the cove and, you know, we were talking about it again. And lastly, the city really needs to definitively identify the source of the runoff and take action to have the responsible parties implement measures to stop it once and for all. Most recently, there's been runoff, you know, now that the development has progressed, now there's some paving in, on the Trinity Point itself. So the last couple of rains, since that paving's occurred, there's been runoff, sediment runoff into Stonecrest Boulevard, onto the newly paved streets, emptying into the storm sewers. So if it's going there, you can't tell me it's not going into the creek.
Gus sent us pictures like Saturday.
So.
I haven't seen it.
You know, no one's here asking to have, have their position improved, okay? Only asking that it be restored to the state it was when we purchased the property before the erosion control issues arose. We paid for lakefront access when we purchased our property. As it stands now, we suffered a loss of property value. And we, while at the same time, we continue to pay higher property taxes based on the original value at the time of purchase. So I also noted that in the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan that was discussed earlier in the meeting, one of the goals was to improve water quality. I think this would be a great start.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Gus has been working on this pretty extensively.
Mike, I don't think anything that you're asking for is unreasonable at all. I've walked that creek as much as you have from one side to the other up to my mid-caps and mud watching it. And all I can say is I, you know, I promised before I was elected that I'd keep my eye on that project because I lived in another community and a developer was allowed to fill in that cove there. I was told that's because we didn't have our MS four then. By the time DHEC finally came out and admitted that they had filled in the cove from Callaway, Newland Properties no longer existed, so they said there was nobody they could enforce it against. There's nothing they could do. All I know is that the neighbor beside me used to have two coves, excuse me, two boatlifts that were usable year round. And after they got done building Callaway out, he had one that was usable about six months out of the year and the other one was dry land. I went from fourteen feet off my dock to about twelve. So I didn't want to see this. The mouth of that creek used to be a place where you could go walk and put your kayaks in or paddleboards or whatever. And now you have to walk forty feet out before you can do it. That didn't happen before they cleared the property to build Trinity Point. We can talk about historic rains. We've had historic rains two years ago, four years ago, eight years ago, ten years ago. It rains. It didn't fill in until they took all the vegetation. I agree. I mean, I have to say, I know that we have a third-party engineer supposed to come out, is what I was told. I know that DHEC's been requested to come out again. Heather and I attended a symposium and when David was there as well, I'm sorry. And, you know, there's a lot of talk about what we can do. But when it comes down to it, you know, they're not required to paint their dirt pink. So we can't see that it's their pink dirt that fills in. But if it wasn't there before they cleared the property and it is there now, I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to come to that conclusion. So I'm with you a hundred percent. And I think we as a city, that lake is our most precious natural resource. When we're working on the comp plan, that's all we talked about. That lake, you may be able to say that lake is Tika K. Okay? And we have to protect the rights of the property owners that live on it. We have to protect that water as our source of drinking water. You know, they just had all that runoff into the street. Now, it's their street, they just paved it. But there are storm sewers on either side of it. Where do those storm sewers go? I don't think they go into the retention pond. I think they're tied into our storm sewers. So I'm saying, I think, I can't, I don't know. But if they can't be made to control their runoff and they haven't been since the day they started the project, then, I mean, what, isn't that our job?
I think so.
All I got to say.
So we have been talking about this for quite a while, Charlie. What's, I mean, it seems like we always get told, yeah, it's going to be fixed, it's going to be fixed. And then every time it rains, and believe me, it rains in Tika K. So it's not like it's, like you said, every hundred years rain or something. It rains all the time and when it does, we get this.
We've consulted with SED HEC. We've consulted with two separate engineering firms, one being the Jolly Wood Associates that we use, along with a, another engineering firm. I believe that information was shared with Mr. Machunas and they have told us that it is the creek bed that is eroding. It is natural erosion. That's what they have told us. I'm not a hydrologist, I'm not a soils engineer. I'm going by what the experts have told us, including the SED HEC representative that has been up multiple times, will be up again this week. They also have weekly inspections from a third-party firm that comes out and does stormwater inspections. With the exception of the very, very beginning where there was a minor breach, according to the reports, there hasn't been a breach. Yeah, it's, it's very difficult for our staff to go out and tell them to clean up things when the engineers and the DHEC officials are saying that it's coming from something else. Makes it very difficult for us to go and say, hey, you developer, go clean up something, even though the engineers that we brought in to look at has said it hasn't come from you.
Did so.
I walked the property with Russell Wilson with DHEC and Tom. And Russell said that very little was done properly in the beginning. And that's when that delta started forming. And he gave Tom a whole list of things that needed to be done. And they came out and worked for weeks to correct it. So let's not say that there was a small breach. It was a big problem. And they came out and totally reworked their BMP, whatever the, whatever initials you call it, okay? They came out and totally reworked it. So, you know, we have a reputation, unfortunately, for, you know, when it's a homeowner building a pool or building a home or doing whatever, you know, enforcing strong on them and not enforcing on the developers. And I hate to say, I think from my version of the vision of what I'm seeing, maybe it's a deserved reputation and that bothers me. If I'm speaking out of turn, I'm speaking out of turn. But I, I saw it, I saw it with Callaway and I'm seeing it now with Trinity. And I don't like it. I'll say it publicly right up here.
So what's the cost to dredge something like that out?
I wouldn't begin to know, sir. But we've got, we've got folks that are on site this, coming up this week, including DHEC. As soon as Tom finishes with those, those meetings, I'd be happy to have him put together a comprehensive report and get that to all the city council.
I mean, I don't know what's going on out there. I haven't been out there, I haven't walked it, but I mean, it sounds like it's pretty obvious to the people who are most impacted and see it on a daily basis that there's obviously something going wrong there that started when this development started. You know, sometimes you have to trust the people that live close, closest to it and see it and experience it and know what it's been, what they're seeing every day over even an engineer or an expert. So I'm certainly curious to find out more, but it sounds like time is of essence because it sounds like it's getting worse and it sounds like, but you know, according to the water depths and things like that, that we're running out of time. So I don't, how long does it take to produce, for Tim to produce a report and for us to take action to do something? Because it sounds like we need to do something fast. If we're going, if we're going to take care of it, otherwise it sounds like it could be.
We're going to take care of it. Whether it's our funds or their funds, we'll make it a budget. I'll vote for a budget item to make this right. So they can either pay for it or we're going to pay for it. But it's going to get fixed.
Well, it's not fair for, if the developer's doing something wrong.
Well, if the developer's going to get away with it, then it really affects the whole city. It doesn't just affect them, it's the whole city.
Right, right. So well, how do we make the developer?
Well, that's why we have a city manager to do all that.
Yeah, I mean, right is right and wrong is wrong. And this is wrong and it's filling up our cove and these people are being impacted and we got to do something. So whatever those next steps are, let's do that. And let's get the people that need to make the decisions there and let's do it. Like, we can't keep talking about this, it's been a year. And it's getting worse.
I can't imagine them coming to city council and asking for anything. It's going to be a unanimous no. So they better get their stuff together. We're not going to play this game anymore with them.
And I think we need, I think we need to hold them responsible. I don't know whether taxpayers have to pay for an issue that the developer created.
Obviously, that's what we want to do. But if something slips through, like it seems like they always get to somehow, then I think we ought to be on the hook.
Someone needs to be held accountable.
Right. Right. All right, anything else? All right, thank you. Keep at it, keep letting us know. Gus is out there all the time in his waders, so he's a, he looks at it, too. He's the one we've got from our representatives from city council to keep watching. He sent us these photos, was it Sunday?
Saturday.
Saturday. And we were all sending text messages to each other how upset we were about this and saying it's still going on. It's still going, something, somebody's not doing what they're supposed to do. After they've told us that we're going to do something. Yeah, come on up. So we're going to get, we're going to get it fixed. State your name and go ahead and ask a question.
So I'm Chris Karish. And I'm building a house next to Mr. Becker. All right, I bought the property in November of last year. Okay, I paid two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for a waterfront lot with a dock so that we could bring our boat. Okay? So as of today, we can't bring the boat into the dock. And so I don't know who's inspecting, but I have video of an orange river flowing from Trinity right down into the cove. So I don't care what experts you're bringing up. Like, what are they looking at that we're not?
I agree. It's very obvious to me.
Now, on December the sixth, the city inspector shut down my property and my build for a potential breach of the silt fence. Okay? So in five months, not one particle of clay passed the barrier. So if they can shut down my job site, why can't we shut down Trinity until they've remediated? That's all I got to say.
You asked a valid question.
Bet you'll get fixed real quick.
Can't disagree with that either.
Can't disagree with that either.
My name is Matthew Stigelbauer. I have permission from Michael to read that letter that he attempted to read earlier. I promise it's relevant, may I approach to retrieve it?
We, we don't, we can read.
Oh, I, I got it. Well, the reason why it's relevant is that it specifically details significant breaches. I mean, it was suggested earlier that the water of Tika K, the water resources of Tika K are Tika K. Within that affidavit are significant, is evidence of significant fuel leakage into the water of Tika K over a long period of time. How that's relevant to this rezoning is specifically a slippery slope argument. If we're gonna rezone 28002, and I'm a former resident of that specific home, if we're gonna rezone 28002 to a commercial purpose, with the assumption that 28001 is eventually going to be commercial, it would behoove the entire city of Tika K to look into whom is going to be developing commercially on that property once it is rezoned.
Do you know who's gonna be developing it?
Well, if the person who owns it now is any evidence, it would be Mr. Denton.
Assumption, right.
Well, yes, that would be the assumption. So, barring any sort of massive financial mishap, any sort of significant change, it will be him. So, I think that the committee should take note of what is in that affidavit, and I think that it is incredibly relevant to the discussion of whether or not that area should be rezoned. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments, public comments? All right, closed, public comments are closed. Next is item four, approval of minutes. Council, you've seen the minutes, are there any additions, deletions, or changes? Hearing none, the minutes stand as written. Item number five, committee reports. We'll start with the Tika K Forever Foundation and Ms. Heather.
Okay, so, Tika K Forever met on December 2nd. We have two new board members, Caroline Hasty and Pete, I butcher his name. Chiracazi, thank you. They completed a new brochure for corporate sponsors. I do have that, I have one copy, and it's been sitting on my washing machine for like a month. So, I'll pass that around to you guys for the look at. Communication from Charlotte Independence is expected in December and Comporium in January. The committee is initiating the Parks and Rec sponsorship, which I had mentioned a couple of months ago. They are taking over. They're gonna begin outreach this month and hopefully have that completed by the end of next month. They are requesting website updates for Catawba Park with more detailed instructions on how to donate, recognition of sponsors, and general updates. Atrium and South State Bank will receive proposals this month. So, we're reaching out to them as well. And then the only other update is the Sweetheart Dance will be held Saturday, February 8th, upstairs in the Glennon Center, and that's open to all families. So, moms, dads, kids, grandparents, whomever would like to come. And all proceeds will go towards Catawba Park. That's what I got.
All right, next is item 5B with Gus with Economic Development.
Okay, we did not have a quorum, but we still met anyway. We discussed Game On and if we'd had any updates from the developer, which we had not. Are looking at backup plans, so to speak, for commercial development within Game On, depending on what we get from the developers. We talked about some synergy with Tika K Forever to help support Catawba Park because that is going to be a big economic driver. We discussed Baxter, even though it's not part of Tika K, Catawba Park is gonna be a regional park. And it was suggested that Councilman Machunas, that's me, reach out to Baxter just to try and get their support, not necessarily financially. I mean, them doing fundraisers over there would be great. But that's also a large affluent community that would make the viability of Catawba Park to developers and potential donors be much larger when they saw that that community was actively involved in it, that this wasn't a Tika K park, that it was a regional park. Other than that, we've just talked about our business schedule, and hopefully we'll have a quorum for the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to item six, unfinished business. Nope, sorry, I'm sorry, Planning Commission, right there in front of me.
So, the Planning Commission has been hard at work, working on a lot of the things that are on this agenda today. So, last time we talked about the recommendation on the amendment to the 2015 through 2025 Comprehensive Plan. We also discussed the rezoning of 28002 Marina Drive. And we had an in-depth conversation about the upcoming year's work plan for the Planning Commission, which will likely not be at the January meeting, but perhaps the February meeting will, will see that work plan. And the Planning Commission will present that to us to approve. And with that, I'm done.
Now, we're done. Let's move item, to item six, 6A, which is the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-4, 10-4 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Tika K as it relates to buildings and building regulations in the city. This is the second reading of an ordinance to automatically adopt the current international building code and all future additions, including the optional administrative first chapters in alignment with the state directives. Clear as mud, everybody got that? This is the second reading, right? Write out an intent of motion.
Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-4 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Tika K as it relates to building and building regulation in the City of Tika K.
All right, I have a motion from Alicia Dash, do I have a second?
Second.
From Gus Machunas. Are there, are there any questions from anybody? All right, time to vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. Item seven, new business. Are you going somewhere? Oh, we're back to the Planning Commission recommendations. Chris Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 7A, the resolution to recommend the adoption of the new comprehensive plan, I believe is in your packet that's dated the 2nd of December. We voted on that at our regular meeting for the month. And on item B, regarding the rezoning of Tax Mac 5840901005, the Planning Commission recommends that you approve the rezoning request from R15 in the city to B1 in the city. Also, all of them under the Marina Overlay District.
All right, is that it? Thank you. All right. Item seven. Item seven is new business, Planning Commission recommendation.
How was that?
Hold on.
He just did seven.
We just did 7A.
Now, we're gonna see.
Hang on, I'll get it right here in a minute. I gotta get my computer sped up. Item 7C is introduction and first reading of an ordinance to adopt and amend the Tika K 2015-2025 Comprehensive Plan as mandated by the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act of 1994 as amended, and to provide for the repeal of all prior comprehensive plans and ordinances. The state requires the local planning commission to develop and maintain a planning process that includes the preparation, evaluation, and updating of certain planning elements considered critical to guide the development of redevelopment of areas within this jurisdiction. The 10-year plan must be updated every five years. The last Tika K Comprehensive Plan was adopted in 2014. The council, planning commission, staff, and residents of Tika K have worked on the update all year, and the Planning Commission has made its recommendation, its recommendation of approval. So, this is for approval of the comp plan in general, right? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to ordinance, ordinance to ordinance to adopt and amend the Tika K 2015 to 2025 Comprehensive Plan as mandated by the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act of 1994 as amended, and to provide for the repeal of all prior comprehensive plans and ordinances.
I have motion from Heather Overman, do I have a second? Second from Alicia Dash. Any questions from anybody? Time to vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, it's unanimous. Okay, new business on 7D is the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to rezone TMS number 5840901005 at 28002, I'm sorry, 28002 Marina Drive from R15 and Marina District and Marina Overlay District to B1 and the Marina Overlay District. Any questions or concerns we've heard from residents?
I have a concern. So, this was something I did bring up at the Planning Commission. I know that the, they mentioned it down there. I know the request, or the conversation has taken place between staff and Mr. Denton. My concern, I just want to express to city council here, is that the request is, would be changing the zoning of a property that's in between two residential properties, parcels that are zoned residential. And I just have a concern from, you know, what I would think would be more of a best practice is to be more consistent with, if we do want things to grow in that way, at least doing both of those rezonings of two properties so that there's some better flow, so that you don't have a mixed use, or you don't have a business in between two residences. At least you could have it where that bottom parcel or that first parcel were to be rezoned at the same time. I realize that that's currently being used as a residence versus a business. However, I'd rather us do both of those at the same time than, you know, place a business in between those two residences. Just 'cause that's what the community is like right now. We don't know, we know that there could potentially be a grand scheme and plan of making this area different than what it looks like now, but I just have some reservations about approving it as-is, being right next to a residence, and then potentially next to another residence at the same time, so.
Is that allowable, Susan, to have, if, if Mr. Denton was living in the residence at O1, to zone both and allow him to still live there? Sorry. I know, I'm sorry. We need to get you a mic over there.
At issue is this, if he's still living in the house that he lives in now, and it were also rezoned to be one, his residence would be grandfathered. But should he cease to live into it, then it would no longer be able to be used as a, as a resident. That's why I think the choice was, let's wait until, see what happens with the comprehensive plan, because then everything gets rezoned to a neighborhood mixed use, which allows the base use by right of the commercial that's permitted in the overlay as well as the residential. So, they wouldn't have to go through another process. Instead of you doing it at now, that had that proactive rezoning, and then, you know, you skip, you do it twice and not three times.
And so, now that the comprehensive plan is passed?
Well, so, first rate. So, why don't we just wait then to, and not approve this and just wait for the comprehensive plan to be approved in January, on January 2nd technically? Second, and then not have to even go through this process?
If you're asking me, that's, that's your per view.
I am asking council, I'm looking at you because I'm looking straight in front of me. But, I mean, it sounds like there's some other considerations that we need to think through as well.
Yeah, I'd like to read that packet. So, I'd like to make a motion to table, item seven, are we on D?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, item 7D, you wanna wait till February or January? You guys wanna read all that stuff?
I wanna read it.
February or January? If you have an opinion.
January, you're talking about 7D.
Okay.
Yeah, January's fine.
We're on 7D, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to table 7D to the February, to the January council meeting.
Second.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 You're an aye, you're an aye? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It's unanimous, I'm sorry, yes.
It is unanimous, okay, so we will table this discussion till we can all read that till the January 2nd meeting. So, the January 2nd meeting just got a little bit longer. Okay, let's go with item 7E. Let me get to E. There it is. Item 7E is resolution approving the lease purchase of vehicles and equipment for fire, police, and utilities. This resolution is necessary to move forward with the purchase of three patrol cars for the Tika K Police Department to replace an aging fleet, a maintenance service truck for TCUD, and a replacement of outdated air packs for our firefighters. These items were presented to council during the budget workshop and public hearing presentation. These items will not impact the fiscal year 1920 budget and will have a minimal impact on the subsequent budgets due to the number of other items being eliminated from the debt schedule during the same time period. The financing was put out for bid, and SunTrust was the lowest bidder, qualified responsive bidder. The equipment and vehicle leases being purchased are all under the state contract pricing. Are there any questions? Because I do. How long is this, this is a, how long is this loan for?
Four years.
And didn't we, we discussed all this in the budget, right?
That is correct.
And we had a line item for, let's just say, the air packs were, what, 300-something thousand? 200-something thousand?
Yeah, probably in the 200,000 range. 211, yes, sir.
And so, that was taken out of the budget for that fiscal year. We were gonna spend 211.
No, sir, no, sir, it was, we, what was budgeted for is the assumed finance or the projected finance cost, not the full amount. We didn't budget for the full 211,000 in the current fiscal year, no, sir.
Is that what you remember?
So, help us understand, so is that the 210, 210,000, 256,000? Debt that's in the budget?
I don't know what you're looking at.
So, you got, you gave us the budget documents at our dais today. If you flip to page 17, where it goes over the Fire Department.
Here, I got one here, sure. Which page?
Okay, that one's the police, okay. 17, sorry, there's capital. Just happens to be almost 211,000 on the police, which is above. But, capital, we've got 135, 156.
Your capital in Fire Department would be, one second.
135, 156?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am, let me, give me one second, and I'm gonna try to pull up what that is.
I thought that there was a line item number of that much. And now, if we're not, if we're not gonna, now we're gonna borrow the money. You understand what I'm talking about? What's my remote? It's still not working. Well, it wasn't in the, when we were talking about the budget. It seemed like it was a line item number, I don't remember it being $480 a year or something. It was a, it was a big number, and all that, all that totaled up to $10,800 or something. Not just paying cash, we're not buying it, and we're loaning, we're borrowing it, where's that money going? Sorry, I'm having trouble getting into the server right now.
So, I guess while we're looking that up, Chief, could you just kind of give us an overview of how much the air packs are, what the replacement plan or schedule looks like, and how, since we're financing these items versus just paying outright for them? Help us understand that a little bit more. There seems to be some, there's confusion up here, so.
Okay, the, the purchase price that was included in the budget was 211,860, but we broke that out. And I don't remember what the, the cost was in the budget.
I'm trying to get to it.
It was about $40,000.
About $40,000, you're correct.
In the ballpark.
Times four, right?
It would have, well, no, it would have gone out, out to seven years.
Seven years, okay.
Yeah, and the replacement plan for those, for the air packs, if we do this as a lease purchase, or we purchase these with the financing opportunity... as a lease purchase, or we purchase these with the financing opportunity that we have here, what we would do is try and roll those air packs over every eight years. At eight years, they have a value. Our air packs today have no value because they've reached end of life. At eight years, we can sell those air packs back and recoup probably the cost of one year in the financing package to do a down payment for the next cycle. It keeps our firefighters in the, basically a two NFPA cycles in the latest air packs. So that's where we're at. The, the price that we got back was actually lower than that. We got a pack, the pricing that we just got was 192,065. So we had a significant reduction and that's because of the government contracting. So that's, that's where that pricing came from. And that's what Manager Fundabert was talking to you guys about.
So this is air packs for the entire squad?
It is. It's 22 air packs.
And so you say there has a life, you're using about eight years?
No, our, our air packs are at the end of life. A lot of them are 15 years old.
Okay.
So the technology is really old.
So every seven years then, we're going to, we're going to do this every seven years?
Every eight.
Every eight years?
Eight year. The goal is to put them on an eight year replacement cycle. That way it keeps us in the latest technology. What's happened this year is the NFPA, who we governs us basically, has driven a change in the fittings on our air packs. So our air packs are 15 years old, some of them. Our bottles are going out of date, which means we have to buy new bottles. The packs that go in, the bottles that go in the packs, they have a 15-year life and they're expiring as well.
Well, I'm sure we all want you to have the best equipment, but I'm just wondering why now we're doing it. I mean, why didn't we do that? You say they're 15 years old. Why didn't we do that four years ago, five years ago?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, and that's my goal, is to put us on a replacement cycle with everything that we do. That way we don't come to you and say, hey, we've got a, a problem we need to address.
Okay, I think there, okay, I see where some of that is. So the total fire department increase was, from last fiscal year to this fiscal year was 259,000, which included 22 air packs, parking lot and building.
Confined space equipment.
Yeah, confined space equipment.
Yes, ma'am.
And then some personnel expenses.
Yeah, we've given some of that money back. We're delaying the parking lot repairs. So that money's been given back. We watched that out early on.
By giving back, you mean saved.
Okay, so the 40, so the $40,000.
So we reduced our budget is what I'm saying, basically.
Yeah. So $40,000 is, is it, that's.
Part of that. That is correct.
That was part of that, yes, ma'am.
That is correct.
Okay. So of the total that you're requesting, $40,000 covers the air packs and we're financing it for four years?
Right.
Well, the, no, the replacement schedule is every seven years, but we're, we're paying, we're, we're financing for four years.
Financing for four. It's a, it's a, it's a total package, but the air packs are in this package. And we are on an eight-year replacement cycle. That's the goal.
Plain as day now?
So 40, so $40,000.
And you really, I get it now. Okay.
Out of the, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're just, the, the air packs need to be on a replacement cycle, as do everything that we use. Air packs, the gear, you name it.
Chiefs.
Yes, absolutely.
Get a new chief every four or five years, replace the old, put in the new. I get it. Like we just did, okay.
So how much is then for the?
Never mind. She said no.
The, the vehicles, what type of vehicles are we getting? And are they replacement vehicles or are they brand-new vehicles?
The TCUD utility service truck would be, would be a new. It would be in addition, not a replacement. The patrol vehicles are, are replacement for some of the chargers and older model vehicles that we have. And we're replacing those and we're replacing those with the.
Explorers.
Oh, with the explorers. Yes, sir.
Okay. What are those estimated at per vehicle?
With the, Chief, why don't you come up?
All the accessories.
With all the decals and everything.
So they're, they're pretty expensive, I think, right?
Yep.
Well, of course, everything's expensive.
Yeah, everything's expensive. They run around 28,000 for the vehicle and then the equipment is approximately 25,000. So it's, it's roughly 53, 54 per car, depending upon everything. Of course, raises every year. We're on a seven-year, try to be on a seven-year replacement cycle. That's, we do have some in our fleet. We have a 2003, we have a 2012, no, 2010. So we're behind on that cycle and we end up with a lot more maintenance on those vehicles. And obviously, if you're on a seven-year cycle and you sell a vehicle, you might get 10,000. If you're on a 10-year cycle, you might get 2,000. So the city gets money back to be able to use that money for vehicles and payments.
Now, with such heavy use, do you guys get a, do we get a warranty?
We do. We have, we have the same warranty that any other vehicle does. Yes, sir.
And we can buy an extended warranty or? You guys found that to be?
Not generally on state contract. No, sir.
No.
Oh, my, my service dealer says, don't do it.
I was like, I don't know.
You're in my wheelhouse now.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so help me understand this math. So it's, so let's say roughly three vehicles are being replaced at about $50,000 each. So that totals to 150,000 roughly, right? 160,000. Okay, then we've got $40,000 that's going to replace the air packs, right?
211,000. 40,000 was the annual.
Okay. Okay, so that's 120, 160. So that's, okay, about 280,000, 280,000. So, and this, this item is requesting 412,000. So help me understand how much that utility vehicle is? Or if there's other things in there?
Council need me for anything else?
I got one more question.
Okay.
How many vehicles do we, do the police have?
Oh, I wasn't prepared for that question tonight. I couldn't tell you exactly. I want to say it's 18, but I, I don't want to misspeak. So anything, I, I, I don't want to tell you something to be wrong.
Let's just take this for instance. We've got 18 and we're doing it every seven years. So we've got to replace.
You got to stay on, really, any year if you don't do it, you're going to put it behind.
So if we do three a year, we'll be way, we'll be more than ahead. Some years might have to do two. It's the math.
I think, I think the math from what I've broken down is three per year.
Okay.
To stay hopefully on a seven-year cycle, but obviously.
So three times seven would be 21 vehicles.
Yeah. So that might be what we're at. Okay.
So, Mr. Dash, the, the principal amount that we would be borrowing is 391,000. It's for one service truck in TCUD, three patrol cars and the 22 air packs. Okay? The 412 includes your 2.179 interest over the span of those four years. It's about 20,000, 20, 25,000, give or take, in interest total for the four years.
Okay. And how much is the utility vehicle?
Utility vehicle is about 32, 33,000 with the, those utility maintenance beds that go on the back with the side toolboxes and things of that nature. Once you get it outfitted. I can send you, be happy to send you the exact quote. I do not have it here with me. But we could definitely send you the exact quote. It's not a problem.
How close are you? Anytime anybody asks, what do you do with all that tax money? We're buying three cars a year, we're buying air packs a year, you know, things to run a city is kind of expensive.
Yes, sir.
And of course, that doesn't even consider our raises, does it? Do we?
You should vote for that.
I can't believe we're getting paid for this. This is so much fun. Hang on just a second. We're doing a little addition hero fest.
338,000.
And what's the, what are we asking for here?
412.
So we're still.
So what am I getting wrong? So you said 120, so I've got $40,000 for the air, air packs times three, you said?
No, you've got, you've got to use the entire total amount. You got 211,000 and change? For your air packs, plus the full price of the three vehicles, the three patrol cars, which is about 53,000 and change per vehicle. And then you've got another 32 and change for the TCUD work truck. You add those up with your, with your interest rate over the four years. So the total amount being, being financed is, for principle, is 391 plus your interest and that's why the, not to exceed the 412.
Okay, there we go.
I think it actually comes out to 411, 885 or something, something very close to that.
All right. Any other questions? You guys just sit down? Are you enjoying the show?
Yeah.
All right, just making sure.
Glad you guys got it.
Yeah.
Glad you guys got it down.
It takes us a little longer to catch up.
Yeah, we're a little slow.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution approving the lease purchase of vehicles and equipment for police, fire, and utilities, not to exceed 412,000 and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to these acquisitions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any questions from anybody? I think we've beat this one enough. All right, it's time to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, it's unanimous. Item 712, 7F. Consideration of adding various roads easements and infrastructure contained within the final plats, phase 1 through 4 of Cameron Creek. The developer of Cameron Creek did submit a request to the city to accept roads easements and infrastructure contained within the final plats for phase 1 through 4. The roads and infrastructure have been inspected by city staff and engineers and have been found to meet city standards. Our attorney has reviewed and approved the corrective deed affidavits and release of liens related to this request. We used to do this quite a bit. We haven't done one of these in a while.
That's great. You're going to start seeing probably several of these coming over the next few months from Cameron Creek. Yes, sir.
So we used to do these like every other week or every other month, I think it was.
Slowing down.
Slowing down, which is.
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to, for you to, let's see, to approve the consideration of adding various road easements. Oh, sorry, 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 wrong one. Approve a motion to accept the roads easements and infrastructure of detailed, as detailed in the corrective deed as presented and contained within the final plats, phases 1 through 4 of Cameron Creek.
I have a motion from Alicia Dash. Have a second?
Second.
From Heather Overman. Any other questions before we vote? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, it's unanimous. Is that it? All right, that's it. City manager report, item 8.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Once again, we've kicked off the Christmas season with a bang, starting with our annual tree lighting. I would like to thank the choirs from TK Elementary School and Fort Mill High School for providing the entertainment. Would also like to thank Joey Bluthen for his efforts in coordinating the events. And a huge, huge, huge thank you to our Public Works employees. They start in late October every year, putting up lights in the medians and setting up and decorating the large Christmas tree, in addition to decorating city hall, the fountain area, the hearth room where Santa comes and hangs out with us. They're basically our Christmas elves and they work, they work really hard and to add that enjoyment for the holidays. So a big shout out to those, those folks. Last week's Christmas light tour with TK Police Department was well attended. Big thank you to Sergeant Rob Burns and the TCPD staff for their efforts on that wonderful event that we have each year. Would also like to congratulate, since he's still here with us, Chief Parker and the TCPD staff on their accreditation renewal. It was a daunting task and they did an amazing job. So good job to them. Especially like to tip the cap to Lieutenant Buddy Spence for all his efforts on that, you know, related to that accreditation. This coming Saturday, TK Fire Department has the pleasure of driving Santa around town to see all the kiddos one final time, checking that list twice. And before he heads back to the North Pole, please don't come to the fire station if you're watching at home. Santa won't be there. He's going to be on the truck, riding around the city. So they're going to get started at 8:30. It took about six hours last year to, to hit them all. So be patient, listen for the sirens. He will come to your neighborhood before he leaves. Let's see. One of my favorite things during the holidays is our annual holiday luncheon with staff. It's awesome to watch our staff have the opportunity to fellowship with staff from other departments while we share a meal together. During the luncheon, Katie and I get the privilege of announcing our employees and department head of the year. We do two employees and inside staff and outside or field staff and one department head. The employees are nominated by department heads and then, and then we select from there. This year's employees of the year were Dana Overlay of our, she's a accounting specialist in our finance department. Sergeant Justin Spencer, for all the reasons that he has been before you guys throughout the year, does a tremendous job for us. And our department head of the year, it's probably long overdue, but Tim Gillette, our operations director, was named department head of the year. So as you see those folks, please join me in congratulating them for a job well done this year. As a reminder, city offices will be closed at noon on Christmas Eve and will reopen at our normal time on December 27th. I would also like to note that beginning January 6th, city hall will be open from 7:30 a.m. to 5 a.m. instead of the 8:30 to 5. We're staggering some office schedules to allow folks that need to come in and make a payment, pick up a parking decal, pay for permits, et cetera, to be able to come in before heading off to work. It will be limited staff from, during that 7:30 to 8:30 time, but with the cross-training we're doing, should be able to help folks with the majority of, of things they may need to come in for. So that, you'll see that starting, again, January 6th as we come out of the holidays. Last but certainly not least, just as a reminder, we'll be getting back together on Thursday, January 2nd for our regular meeting that month. Please note, again, this is a Thursday. We'll kick things off that night by having Councilmember Machunas and Councilmember Richard sworn in. And at the conclusion of that brief meeting, we'll have a small reception for Mr. Machunas and Mr. Richard, as has been customary in the past, for them and their families. We hope that everybody else stick around and join us in congratulating them. That concludes my report for the evening.
All right, we'll go into council comments with Alicia Dash.
All right, I know I've said this, I feel like I've said this a lot the past several meetings, but just want to thank again to Susan and Cara for all their work. Thanks to the planning commission, the steering committee, and all the members of the public that participated in the development of the revision to the comp plan. Lots of, lots of time, hours and thought went into that. So thank you all so much for all of your hard work there. Wanted to give a shout out to the leaf collection folks that have been working hard.
Yes.
So hard on the weekends to get all the leaves picked up. I'm so grateful for them and so is our grass and the gutters. So lots of hard work there and so really, really do appreciate all their work. Also wanted to give a shout out to Carmen Wells for helping to plan the secret Santa for city halls and all the employees that serve, serve us every day of the year, every year. So I know she put a lot of effort into planning that and getting secret Santas throughout our city. And so thank you to those who stepped up to volunteer for that. And then I'm also looking forward to seeing Santa stop by our home and our, my son's already asking about it. So looking forward to that. And so everyone, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year.
And a Festivus for the rest of us?
Yes, and a Festivus. I like that. I like that.
Well, I think there is a Festivus now, right?
So, and with that, I'll look forward to seeing you all, I hope, at every council meeting in the new year.
Yes, the leaf, the leaf pickup, such a relief. So that's one of my, I think for the month was my number one question was the leaf. Every, why is it doing, why are you picking up on that side of town in my, my block? I wish, and we have two trucks, right? So, and they worked six days a week?
On Thanksgiving, in the rain.
They are doing six days a week, rain or shine. They're starting up at about 7 a.m. and they're working until right at 5, when it starts to get dark.
So the guy on the old truck really takes it hard because the new truck, he gets to sit in the cab while he's driving and move the arm. But the old one, he gets towed in a trailer and he sits, and he sits outside, getting rained on and catching exhaust fumes and everything else.
Like every leaf. They get it all.
So we're putting Gus on that next year.
Yes.
Go ahead, Gus.
I'd like to make a motion that I get to drive the leaf truck next year. So I would like to just say one thank you to everyone who worked on the comp plan. That was a big deal. And I mean, it was a lot of involvement from a lot of people to make that happen. Congrats to Dana, to Spencer again, and also to Tim Gillette. Tim won't remember this, but I met him 22 years ago when I had to have him come out to my house and pay him $10 to look at a tree that was going to fall on my house and go, yep, it's dead, give me 10 bucks. So look where he's, look what he's doing now. Sorry I got so fired up about the lake stuff, but I'm very passionate about that. Can't help it. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everyone. Please remember the reason for the season. And, you know, a friend of mine posted something on social media a few weeks back about, why can't I live in a town that's like a Hallmark card? And I fired right back. I, I do. I mean, you're riding down TK Drive, looking at all those trees that are all lit up. You're headed to a, the lighting of the community Christmas tree and you've got the elementary school choir and the high school choir playing. And then there's, you know, hot chocolate and cookies and our police department. and cookies, and our police department takes people all around to look at the best Christmas lights in the city. I mean, where else do you get that but TKK? So anyway, Merry Christmas, everyone.
All right. So we've had a really busy year, and I just want to thank all staff. So everybody that took part in everything that we did this year, I, I really, really, truly thank you. I was lucky enough to stop by the staff holiday luncheon last week. So I'm grateful to everybody that, that worked so hard to get all of the items that we put on you checked off the list. I know we make your life harder, so thank you. Santa has been busy the last two weeks. He wrote 115 letters, and those were mailed out from the North Pole today. So they should be arriving to your kiddos anytime. As the head elf this year, we normally get around 200 letters, so I was grateful for the 115. But if you missed it this year, I'm planning to do it again next year. So send in your, send in your Santa requests. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, everybody.
All right, and because I'm last, I get to check off all the stuff that was already mentioned. That's gone, that's gone, that's gone. We had a really great, and the fire department helped out with this, Toys for Tots. Do you know how many toys we raised? I know we had about a dozen bikes and just unbelievable amount of toys. So appreciate the fire department's help with that. Toys for Tots and Holly LaMonica. I've known Holly for many years. That's the first time I ever heard her last name. She's just Holly to me. Holly LaMonica, thank you, if you're watching on TV, if you watch later on. She puts together this, I think this is the third year now she's put this together, second at least. So we appreciate it, all those toys. I drove by up there and saw those bikes sitting up there by the, by the Christmas tree. It's really, really great. And I hope everybody has a great Christmas, and anything else. That's all I got. Motion to adjourn? Seconded? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Second? I'll second.
We're done. Thank you.